Okay, so. Oops, let's see here.
Restart the work session stuff.
Okay, sure. All right, so the next item is approval of the minutes of the special city council work session on March 12th, 2019. The regular city council meeting of, and regular city council meeting of March 12th, 2019.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda, or the minutes have been approved. All right, the next item is the proclamation declaring April National Safety Digging Month in the city of Richfield, and I believe that we have some guests here, and I will have Director Asher just, do you know, oh, well then I'll ask them. I'll come over here, normally we go to the podium. Are the three of you with, for, here for the proclamation? Okay. Well, maybe, will you come over?
[laughing]
And give, give us a little more information of who you are and, um,
That's my water over there.
And your visit today. And then I will read the proclamation, too.
Do you want to come sit here?
Normally, we'd all go together to the podium. This is the makeshift podium. Yeah, thank you for, yes, thank you very much. And could you please introduce yourselves?
So my name is Scott Sainsbury, I'm a supervisor with Centerpoint Energy in Richfield, my area. I brought with me a couple of, four persons that work in the area, they do quite a lot of work in the city itself.
Great.
It's going to be a busy construction season, we have a lot of projects planned for Richfield this summer, so we just wanted to reach out to you guys and say thank you for proclaiming April to be Safe Digging Month. Call 811 before you dig.
Great. Thank you so much for coming, and I will read the proclamation, whereas-
Did everybody introduce themselves?
Would, could you each introduce yourselves?
My name's Jason Carlton, I'm with, uh,
Centerpoint Energy.
Street foreman for Centerpoint Energy.
Thank you.
Response to gas leaks.
Thank you.
I'm Ron Lester, I'm an advanced foreman for Centerpoint Energy, obviously also, but I basically oversee the super high level, oversee the need and I oversee the crews and the work. We are working to be safer as a whole in the city here, too. We're just, as a matter of fact, I was just working on a presentation for our contractors, new presentation for digging safely. And it goes hand in hand with proclamation.
Thank you so much for introducing yourself, and thank you for coming. The proclamation is pretty informational, so I will just go ahead and read it, and this will speak exactly to why it is so important to do safe digging. Whereas each year, the nation's underground utility infrastructure is jeopardized by unintentional damage by those who fail to call 811 to have underground lines located prior to digging. And whereas undesired consequences such as service interruption, damage to the environment, personal injury, and even death are potential results. And whereas the Common Ground Alliance and its 1,700 members promote the national Call Before You Dig number, 811, in an effort to reduce these damages. And whereas 811 was designated by the FCC in 2005 and provides potential excavators and homeowners a simple number to reach their local one-call center to request utility line locations at the intended digging site. And whereas through education of safe digging practices, excavators, homeowners, and homeowners can save time and money, keeping our nation safe and connected by making a simple call to 811 in advance of any digging project, waiting the required amount of time, respecting the marked lines by maintaining visual definition throughout the course of the excavation, and finally, digging with care around those marks. And whereas all parties agree that the safe digging is a shared, that safe digging is a shared responsibility. Now, therefore, I, Maria Regan Gonzalez, Mayor of the city of Richfield, do proclaim April 2019 is National Safe Digging Month in the city of Richfield, and encourage excavators and homeowners throughout the city to always call 811 before digging. Safe digging is no accident. Proclaim this 26th day of March 2019. Thank you so much for coming, and thank you for this information. We'll clap. I had not heard of 811, I don't know if others had heard of 8, okay, so some folks have heard of 811, good.
Maybe we can have a photo op with, with the three of them?
Is Neil here? I don't know, kidding. Great.
Yeah, of the three of you, no, 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 I'm just talking about Maria and the three of those guys.
All right.
And this will, we can post this on our city website, and this gets a lot of folks, we can put some information on 811.
Thank you for not making me read that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Oh, thank you, so that's your first favorite thing.
Thank you.
Feel like a talk show host right now. No, we're going to come over here. Hats off to hometown hits, could be some type of Family Feud thing. Okay, so hats off to hometown hits, you know, I try to go around, and I just don't remember, does anyone remember who was first?
I think I was, it was my turn.
It was your, oh, last time was, or today is?
Well, I, being that I wasn't here last time, then-
Oh, yeah, let's go over to Councilmember Garcia to start.
My turn, yeah. And, uh, and I was in my car most of the day, so I didn't have time to sit down and actually, so I'm just, just by memory, I will say that, you know, the benchell, if you want to buy a brick, you have to do it before the end of this month. And those bricks are, you know, for anybody that you want to remember, or if you've done something and, and you want to salute yourself, or, you know, that's, it's a celebratory type of thing, so we honor people that have contributed and have been community builders in our city. So don't forget, we have till the end of March. And second, I wanted to mention the fact that Maria Regan Gonzalez was a recipient of the Bush Fellowship Award, and, and that was extremely impressive. Not only did she get an award, but so did Norma Garcés from Richfield, and she is the director of El Colegio Charter School in Minneapolis. But our very own mayor went, jumped a lot of hoops and, and just really did an outstanding job of, of, of passing, I, I call it, I call it kind of a passing, you know, what's the worst excruciating test you can take? And I'll say the LSAT was really, really bad. But, right, Mary?
Right.
So it was a little worse than that, but yet, put that away, I'm talking to you. But yet, she really, she selected some folks that were really able to help her and guide her, and she was very focused on what she was doing, and she worked herself really hard. So, you see, I wasn't going to say that word. But anyway, we are so very, very proud, because here's the mayor, new mayor, who's still going to school, who has now been recognized as a potential person, I think, that's going to bring our community together, and, and I think it makes us look good, and we want to, you know, just, because it's one of our own, we want to certainly congratulate you and tell you we're honored that, that you're, you're one of us, and, and we're honored that, you know, that your little stipend of $100,000 will, 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 will help in your job of bringing, of doing the, and fulfilling your obligation as you prescribe to the Bush Fellowship people. So that's, that's about it, I don't know if you, anybody wants to follow through on that.
Hear, hear.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Thank you. I will pass it to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor Regan Gonzalez, and congratulations also on the, on the Bush Fellowship grant and, and award. We have a fellow amongst us, really proud of you. I just have one, one announcement, and this is a program, does not get enough attention, is just an amazing program, it's transformational for families, and it's our Richfield Parks Summer Program. And a lot of people are not aware that if you have young children between six and 12, and they're school age, they're grade schoolers, for six weeks during the summer, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, kids can go, and they have supervised time at the park, they have crafts, they have games, they have off-campus visits to, to different areas, and this is all paid for by the Parks and Rec Board, so this is something we really invest in. If your children don't go to Richfield Public Schools, and you're not sure how they can get to make closer friends with kids that are in the public schools and don't know how to meet their neighbors, this is a great opportunity for them to meet their neighbors. You sign up now, you can use it when you want to, they can drop in, they can leave. A tremendous program, it really changes summers for kids, changes summers for moms and dads, so take advantage of that. You can go to the Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec site on our website and register for, for free, but you have to register, and you can register for the park that's closest to you, we do it at Madison, we do it at Jefferson, and we do it at Augsburg. Thank you.
Councilmember Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things today, one, I was honored to be part of a, a meeting of a bunch of people along what's currently Metro Transit Route 5, for the Metro D Line meeting, and hear about the amazing work that's already gone into this Bus Rapid Transit Route that will connect from the Mall of America Transit Center all the way up to Brooklyn Center, and just really impressed by all of the work that's gone into that already, and excited to see the, the results of that. And then the second thing, I had a chance to sit down a little for a longer conversation with Neil, who runs communications in town, and just want to give a huge shout out to him. He does, in addition to all of the ongoing work, he's got like three major projects underway, and just managing it all like a, like a pro, so I think he deserves a, a lot of kudos for his ongoing good quality work.
Great. Councilmember Supple.
So I would like to add my congratulations to Mayor Regan Gonzalez for the fellowship, that's quite an honor. I have two things, one was a message that was sent to me by Brenton Parsons, and he asked me to please share this for the hats off. Richfield Middle School and the Richfield Middle School Hockey Club would like to extend their appreci, appreciation to Nick Thompson and the Recreation Department of the city of Richfield. Mr. Thompson and his team went out of his way, out of their way to ensure the facilities and rinks at Donaldson Park were available and in terrific shape during a challenging winter season. We would also like to thank Chris Weeby and the staff at the Richfield Ice Arena, as they are currently exploring opportunities to provide the school district with ice time so that Richfield youth will have time for critical stick and puck opportunities. The team at Richfield Public Schools appreciates the community's support for our schools, and that's Brenton Parsons, who was the advisor for the hockey club, because with, they're working with some of the NHL alumni to try and bring some Richfield hockey opportunities back to our children, because a lot of people didn't have that opportunity, and so the NHL players helped get a lot of equipment and make things affordable, and the city helped facilitate the whole thing, so Mr. Parsons wanted to make sure that we thanked everybody publicly for all their help from the city. My other thing is just a reminder that the Community Wellness Expo 2019 is coming up, it's going to be at Richfield High School, and it's from 9:00 to noon on Saturday, April 13th, and in the past, it's been a great place for people from Richfield and all over the community to gather, so please watch for information about that as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. It's so, I did not know that about the hockey program. I, I grew up playing hockey, and I just really appreciated the opportunity to be on a team sport, and I do think it is not an accessible sport in many ways for folks, and it's unfortunate because it is a great opportunity, so it was great to hear that. Well, thank you so much for the congratulations on the Bush, and I would like to give a special thanks to Councilmember Garcia, she really helped me in my application. There was over 600 folks that applied from across the Midwest region, and they selected 24, and I think we went through five different interview stages, and the last stage was a four and a half hour interview, and they tried to make it welcoming and friendly, and said, relax, this is, we, we're your cheerleaders and support you, and I was sweating profusely, because I'm like, this is, I can try to relax, but this is a, a big deal. And, and basically what it is, is resources for leaders, who they really see a lot of potential in, and, and funding to really kind of launch my leadership, and, and they saw that potential in me, so, so what I'm going to focus on is doing a lot of self-reflection around community values, my values as a leader, governance models, looking at, looking at different ways to govern, based on what those values are, and then I get a chance to go to conferences, trainings, use those funds to potentially reduce my hours at work to be able to do this over two years, and really focus on those leaders as mayor of equity and inclusion, inclusion, and, and leading as a whole entire community. What does that actually look like? What does that mean? So that it's not this nebulous concept and idea, but it actually translates into very tangible outcomes for the better of our, of our community. So that will be the next two years, I'm, I'm really thankful for those resources, and I will definitely be sharing the information and trying to find out how I can bring as many people from the Richfield community along to participate. I want to just give a couple congratulations from our fire department, we have John, Josh Nelson, who will become the next lieutenant of our fire department, he was recently promoted, and this will go into effect at the end of March. And then we also have Lieutenant Brad Bennett, who has been with the fire department for 30 years, so we are also currently celebrating 30 years in service. And I would say, having folks that, in Richfield, that have been here for a very long time is not unco, or is not uncommon, we have, we have folks in our staff that have been here for an extremely long time, they have left and come back, they are from Richfield a lot of times, their families from Richfield, they grew up in Richfield, they go, you know, back to their parents' house in Richfield during lunch and, and eat with them, so it just speaks volumes to the, the quality that we have here in our city of Richfield. People want to work here, and they don't want to leave, and they feel a very deep connection to this city, and it's not just a job, it is much deeper than that, so these two promotions are an example of that. Please look in your mailboxes for the State of the Community postcard, our residents will be invited to the State of the Community, so that, again, is looking at how can we be more inclusive and govern as a community, and instead of doing the, the typical State of the City, we're going to be doing a State of the Community, where different groups in our community, we're, will be sharing their vision for the future, we'll have some entertainment, we'll have some food as well, and we'll do it after hours so that families who are working can attend. And that is April 11th from 5:30 to 7:00 at the middle school, and residents will be getting a postcard. The next item, I've got two more items, and the next item is Earth Day is coming up on April 22nd, so there's a bunch of different Earth Day events. There is going to be an event scheduled at Wood Lake Nature Center on April 28th, and it's Earth Day Arbor Day celebration, there is a limit for 100 people to attend, and basically we'll be, you know, going out to Wood Lake and pulling buckthorn and planting trees, which is extremely important, buckthorn is something, an invasive species that is really hard to, to manage, so this is a great opportunity to come together and, and pull as much as possible. There'll also be refreshments, and it's going to be from 1:00 to 4:00 PM on Sunday, April 28th, and the event is free, so you can go on our city website and sign up for that, bring your friends, your neighbors, and your kids, that will be a fun event. Additionally, we have an Adopt a Park program, I am super happy, half of my house was pretty much covered by snow, you could barely see anything but the roof, I felt like, in, in February, and a lot of that, if not most or all of the snow has melted, and we are starting to see the trash and all the things that have accumulated in our yards, in the streets, and in our parks. So this is a great time for Earth Day Arbor Day and Spring to get with your community group, whether it's faith-based, it's a family group, it's a neighborhood group, you know, to come together and adopt a park in Richfield and help clean those parks up, and I'm sure we may have to even do a couple passes of each of our parks, depending on, on what it looks like out there. So, folks can get a hold of, oh, I have it on this email here. So traditionally, folks have contacted John Evans, who coordinates the park cleanups, so what they can do is go to the city website and search, or do backslash Adopt a Park, and that will show you how, you know, who you get in contact with to adopt a park, and then the city will provide the bags, gloves, and garbage pickers, you just bring the people and your group of folks to sponsor that park cleanup, and we are also going to have a Vet's Day cleanup as well. So please consider with your friends, family, and community groups in adopting a park and help us clean up after the long winter. And then the very last thing I have is, last Friday night, I was able to go to the Minnesota Independence Community College Gala, which was formerly known as Minnesota Life College, and they are in, located in the Colony Apartments over by Best Buy, they've been there for quite a while, and they are a, a nonprofit focused on serving our kids and students with autism, and helping them with life skills, secure jobs, and get a great education, and they've been such a great community partner over the years. They had over 800 people at their gala, and I just wanted to read something because it was extremely touching and really goes back to the importance of what does community mean, what does that mean here in Richfield, and what does it look like, and a lot of people, I think, do not know about MICC, and they are a huge asset into Richfield, so I just wanted to read a little bit of what the executive director, Amy, said during the gala, and I'm just going to read her remarks. So she said, "What do I mean by sustainable independence? Sustainable independence requires not only having the necessary skills to live on your own, to have a job, and to be able to take care of yourself, but it also requires a community to surround you that supports your needs, and we cannot do this on our own." Sustainable independence is a part of a community, is being a part of a community that has access to jobs, affordable housing, public transportation, and safe neighborhoods where we feel comfortable walking down the street. Sustainable independence is about being a part of a community where your friends live, with neighbors and employers and first responders who understand and embrace all individuals, including those with learning differences and those on the autism spectrum. Independence can be achieved, but it can be, it cannot be sustained without a strong and healthy community to live in. But what really makes sustainable independence possible, what makes our dreams achievable are the communities that recognize the value MICC brings and what our graduates have to offer. The city of Richfield has been a stellar example of what a community that supports sustainable independence looks like. 99% of our MICC members live in Richfield, 99%. 90 access more than seven different bus routes to get to work on a daily basis, and 30% are employed in Richfield businesses. So when she said that, I just didn't know those statistics and those numbers, and I felt really proud to be a part of a city and community that does support residents with learning differences and, and those on the autism spectrum, and I think there's so much more work that we can do, and we have a great partner in MICC, and I just wanted to share that, because I don't think that a lot of people know about MICC and the great work that they do. So that, I think, is all, oh, and I have one last thing, sorry, normally I don't have this many things, but a lot of great things are happening. We did get a memo on March 14th, and I wanted to just read this, so the city of Richfield has been awarded the Trailblazer Award for 2018, and TRAIL stands for Transportation Resources to Aid Independent Living, and TRAIL provides transportation services for developmentally disabled adults, enabling them to attend a variety of ARLE, which stands for Adaptive Recreation and Learning Exchange Partnership Programs. And annually, TRAIL recognizes an individual organization with the award, recognizes their passion and commitment in supporting the independent spirit of trail riders and ARLE participants. So they only pick one organization a year. The city provides social service funding to TRAIL to financially support rides to the city's ARLE programs, and the award will be presented at the TRAIL Annual Meeting Friends and Family Celebration on April 22nd at the Embassy Suites Hotel. So again, another great honor and testament to the work that the city of Richfield does.
Can I ask, our city manager, relating to TRAIL, did you get somebody to go and pick up the award?
Uh, Councilmember, I thought you were going to go.
Who is?
I thought you were going to go.
Oh, I'm going to go, okay.
Yeah.
Fine, let me have-
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent calendar, and that will go to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent calendar contains several items, separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. Item A, consideration of the approval of a bid tabulation and award of contract to McNamara Contracting, Inc., for the 2019 concrete sidewalk curb and gutter repair project, in the amount of $757,060. An authorization of the city manager to approve contract changes under $175,000 without further city council consideration. Item B, consideration of the approval of a bid tabulation and award of contract to Batuminus Roadways, Inc., for the 2019 Millin Overlay project, in the amount of $2,51,632. An authorization of the city manager to approve contract changes under $175,000 without further city council consideration. Item C, consideration of the adoption of a resolution supporting the elimination of the exemption that prevents Hennepin and Ramsey Counties from receiving a portion of the sales tax on leased vehicles through the county-state aid formula. Item D, consideration of the approval of an amendment to the Hennepin County, Hennepin County Cost Participation Agreement for the acquisition of right-of-way for the 77th Street underpass of Trunk Highway 77 project. I submit the, the, all of these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments on the consent? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Supple.
I just wanted to commend whoever came before us in the last several decades that did the streets in Richfield, because you go to other cities and people talk about the fact that our streets are constructed well, they've stood up over time, we haven't, don't have to keep replacing them, we've got a bigger base than a lot of places, so somebody thought far ahead into the future and planned so that we were good stewards of taxpayer money, and I don't know who all those individuals were, but over the years, they have really probably saved us a lot of money, and so I wanted to say thank you to them, and I think that the Millin Overlay project is continuing that good stewardship, so I just wanted to put that out there, because we've done a lot over the years, and it was, it's been happening over decades and- it was, it's been happening over decades, and several people deserve a thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Oh, I was going to say to Director Kristin Asher, who, who I helped with the Sweet Street Project, right, Kristin?
Right.
Thank you. And, um, so, you know, she's, she's, continues to do a really, really good job. So, it's like there was never any transition, because she just hit the ground running. And she's, she's, um, now, now her next goal is to not have potholes in Richfield.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye. The consent calendar has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is consideration of the adoption of a resolution supporting the 2020 census. On April 1st, um, 2019 marks one year out from the Census Day 2020. The Minnesota State Demographic Center has asked cities to pass a resolution in support of the 2020 cen- census, and began highlighting the importance of the census and ensuring everyone who lives in Richfield is counted. Uh, this is, uh, this is important for, for a couple of reasons. Uh, staff has brought to, brought to mind a couple of them, and I wanted to add just, just one more. But congressional reapportionment, uh, the Minnesota project, um, is, is projected either to lose one district, uh, House, uh, House District, uh, and that would mean one, the loss of one, uh, congressperson, um, or, or we're, we're set to, to maintain our current level. And what that means is, the loss of, the loss of one, one representative, um, means we'd add, uh, at least 100,000 additional citizens to, to each district. We'd lose influence. We'd lose our opportunity to, uh, access resources. We'd actually have less resources, because we have less people counted. And, um, there's a statistic that, um, in, on average, it's been $15,000 per, per person per decade that lives in the, the district, uh, in terms of the resources that the federal government provides for our roads, for our bridges, uh, for things like that. And I just want to, uh, make a brief comment. There's, um, been, been some political back and forth as to whether, uh, people who don't have status or are not citizens would be disclosed, or mixed-status families would have to disclose that. As of now, as of today, uh, there, there is no requirement, um, that's not finalized. But just want to say to every resident, uh, to everybody that lives in Richfield, we need, we need you counted. We need your voice. Um, every, 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 just like every vote counts, every, every, uh, resident counts for the purposes of the cen- uh, census. So, we just, we would, um, I would, um, move that we adopt, uh, a resolution, uh, supporting the, um, the 2020 census, um, if there were no other, other comments or, um, from our, from my colleagues.
Any other comments? Councilmember Supple?
I was just going to second the motion.
Oh, second? Are there any comments? No. I, I would like to, um, make a couple comments. This was a really good opportunity to not just, to, to talk about some concrete examples of why and how the census is so important. Um, Councilmember Troutman did a great job of highlighting some of those reasons, and then kind of what is happening now. I was also, um, able to pull some more information, so that when we think about, um, filling it out, and we think about our friends, families, and neighbors in Richfield, we can think about these things. So, the highest undercounted demographic is actually children under five. So, there is going to be a big push in the work in Minnesota to have kids, um, to, to make sure we are counting our kids under the tagline of "Remember the Babies" when filling out the census forms. So, please keep that in mind. Um, Minnesota gets about $1,500 in federal funding per person per year for the 10 years until the next census. So, that it's about $8 billion over 10 years, which $5 billion of, of the state, um, use, uses this for medical assistance of that. This, oh, $5 billion of that the state uses for medical assistance. So, it's a huge contributor, um, the amount of money that we get, um, to, you know, healthcare based on the census. Seventy-five to 80% of residents will receive a postcard directing them to an online response. So, one of the biggest changes for the 2020 census is that there's going to be a huge push to do this online, which creates, um, issues for folks that may not have internet access. That's, that's easy, whether it's folks in low, uh, wealth communities or folks in greater Minnesota, also where, where online, um, internet access is patchy. 20 to 25% will get the printed form, uh, if they live in an area where internet connection is, or internet connectivity is low. Richfield has two census tracts where almost a quarter or more of the households did not mail back their census questionnaire in 2010. Um, so that came from a person who is leading the community-based initiatives in, across the state of Minnesota, to make sure that residents are aware from all different backgrounds about the census. And then, from the state demographer's office, um, they sent an email today. They also talked about the importance of renters, um, and, and the difficulty in reaching out to renters. So, again, as we look at Richfield, these are things to keep in mind. So, he said renters are by far more, the most likely people to be undercounted by the census. Renter households are more likely to contain historically undercounted individuals, such as young adults, people who are highly mobile, immigrants, people of color, people with disabilities, and peop- and people renting, um, are more likely to live in multi-unit buildings, which are difficult for census enumerators to access when they're trying to follow up in person to non-responding households. Some of the statistics that he highlighted, um, were 45% of foreign-born residents in Minnesota households lit, are renters. 65% of Black Minnesotans are renters. 32% of Asians. 46% of Latinx Minnesotans are renters. 40% of young adults, those 18 to 24, and 30% of children under the age of five. So, then he goes on to talk about the amount of money that is connected to folks filling out the census and the type of funding that comes to Richfield and Hennepin County. So, and, and I know Councilmember Troutman highlighted it. But I did want to take the time to, to share some of that, because these are things that we may not know. And it's extremely important that all Richfield residents do as much as possible to make sure that they fill out that census, but also that they get their friends, neighbors, and other community members, whether it's in their faith groups or, or social circles, to also fill it out. It's extremely crucial. Um, and all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The resolution has been passed. The next item is the city manager's report.
Nothing to report tonight, Madam Mayor.
And the last item goes to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly appreciate the confidence you have shown. And, and, um, and I viewed the, um, payroll and claims and studied it, you know, for at least, oh, half an hour, maybe. So, I will, um, move claims and payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Claims and payroll has been passed. And seeing as there is nobody here for the open forum, I adjourn this meeting.